Go ahead. We're going to call this meeting to order. And, um, this is Tuesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty. How's that? Are we seeing clearly now, or is everything still kind of foggy for me? Let's see, um. Loretta, I see you are in our Zoom room. Could I have asked you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I would be honored, Commissioner. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation after God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Loretta. And with the clerk of the board, call roll, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
Having issues hearing you very well.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: A change of limited liability members for the DAB-Lab, a liquor license application for the Belfair Market, change of location application for Rocky Brook Ranch and New Sussex Farm LLC, a change of corporate officers for the juicer extractions, and a marijuana license will be discontinued for the Wicked Green Gardens. We received applications from April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons for the Housing Authority Board. Pete Buckus sent in a letter of resignation from the Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Panel. And Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding Cushman Number One, Stress and Stability Analysis Updated Plan and Schedule for the Cushman Project.
Great, thank you. Forgot to turn down my phones. That would be embarrassing. All right, moving on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for public input. I do not see anyone on, in our Zoom room from members of the public in our Zoom room. Do we have any, um, anything from the public? Has anyone mailed, emailed anything into you or letters? Great, thank you. Moving on to item number six, adoption of today's agenda.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of today's agenda as presented.
All second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of today's agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the September fourteenth, twenty twenty, and November second, twenty twenty briefing minutes, as well as the November third, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the September fourteenth, twenty twenty, and November second, twenty twenty briefing minutes, and November third, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to item number eight, approval of today's action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on the action agenda. Commissioners or members of the board can ask questions or have items removed for a separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Schutie, if you could take items eight point one through eight point six. Commissioner Netherland, items eight point seven through eight point eleven. And I will read items eight point twelve through eight point sixteen.
Okay, item eight point one, approval to set a public hearing for December eighth, twenty twenty at nine fifteen a.m. to consider approval of budget supplemental appropriations and amendments to the twenty twenty general budget. Total requests for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund are four million two hundred ninety-two thousand and fifty-five dollars. Total request, the authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund are fourteen million three hundred thirty-seven thousand and five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Item five, uh, item eight point two, approval of warrants and treasury electronic remittances, claims clearing fund warrant numbers eight zero seven five five one four through eight zero seven five six three zero and the amount of one million five hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Direct deposit fund warrant numbers seven two six seven nine through seven three zero seven one and the amount of seven hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Salary clearing fund warrant numbers seven zero zero five five three one through seven zero zero five five six six and the amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Treasury electronic remittances in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two thousand fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. Item eight point three, approval for the chair to sign the non-competing continuation attestation letter for the SAMPA grant numbered one nine T one eight one nine three nine A for Mason County Recovery Court Expansion. Item eight point four, approval to sign the interagency agreement numbered IAA two one five seven five for the interpreter reimbursement program through the administrative office of the courts. Item eight point five, uh, approval of two resolutions making a declaration of substantial need for purposes of setting the limit factor, one for the current expense and one for the county road property tax levy for the year twenty twenty-one. And item eight point six, approval for the Mason County Board of Equalization to hear completed and timely filed appeals for the twenty twenty assessment year.
Madam Chair, item number eight point seven reads, approval for the board to authorize the Public Works Director to execute the service level agreement with Washington Technology Services, Washington Tech, for G I S imagery services. Item number eight point eight reads, approval for the board to authorize the chair to sign the following Title VI of the Civil Rights Act related requirements. Number one, updated Title VI non-discrimination agreement. Number two, annual report covering the reporting period from May first, two thousand nineteen to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and number three, U S D O T standard Title VI non-discrimination assurances. Item number eight point nine, approval of the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SEDS project list as recommended by the Mason County Economic Development Council. Item number eight point one zero, approval to amend the contract twenty dash zero eight four with additional CARES Act funding for Crossroads Housing for the Eviction Rent Assistance Program Grant. Item number eight point one one, approval to amend the contract twenty dash zero six nine to accept the additional eight hundred fifty-two thousand forty-eight dollars from the Department of Commerce for the Emergency Solutions Grant COVID- nineteen. Approval to amend subcontracts with Crossroads Housing and Shelton Family Center to expand non-congregate shelter capacity, increase support staff and rental assistance to move households into permanent housing from the temporary emergency shelters. Approval to enter into contract with Turning Point to increase shelter operations and case management in response to the COVID- nineteen.
Item eight point one two, approval to set a public hearing for December eighth, twenty twenty at nine fifteen a.m. to consider approval of the Chehalis Basin Partnership Addendum in response to the twenty eighteen Stream Flow Restoration Act. Item eight point one three, approval of the adjusted environmental health fee schedule with an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-one. Item eight point one four, approval for a payment of five thousand to the city of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the state of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor two zero eight SR sixteen to SR three Gorst Interchange Transportation Project. Item eight point one five, approval to sign the sub-recipient contract with the EDC to assist with CARES funding or CARES Act funding to the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound North Mason Team and the South Sound YMCA for COVID- nineteen-related costs and mitigation efforts. Item eight point one six, approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Having read through the action agenda, are there any items that you would like to be removed for additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove item eight point one four and item eight point one five.
And item eight point one six, please.
Okay, and I do believe we need to remove item eight point one as well.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda with the exception of removal of eight point one, eight point, uh, what do we have here, up one four, eight point one five and eight point one six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda. But remove items eight point one, eight point one four, eight point one five, any eight point one six. Or is there any additional discussion on those?
No, just a compliment. Item number eight point one two, we're setting this public hearing on an issue that is very important to this county and our people and all the work that's gone into the stream flow. Dave, an extra pat on the back for all that hard work and everything that you and your folks have put into all that. This is a big event and this will help set the stage for the other ones that we've all been working on. Thank you.
Agreed. So we have a motion and a second. Already said that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? None of the action agenda is approved. So let's move on to item eight point one and ask staff to brief.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Jennifer Byerly. So the change that we had on item eight point one from when it was briefed was adding twenty thousand dollars to the auditor's office for, um, APSME contract settlement to budgeted salaries. So the total request for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund went from four million two hundred seventy-two thousand fifty-five dollars to four million two hundred ninety-two thousand fifty-five dollars with this change. The total request to authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund remain at fourteen million three hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Are there any questions on this change?
Not for me.
No.
Nope, not for me. I appreciate you catching that and amending it. So thank you. Thank you. Right, any further discussion?
With that, Madam Chair, I move for the approval to set a public hearing for December eighth, twenty twenty at nine fifteen a.m. to consider approval of a budget supplemental appropriations and amendments to the twenty twenty budget. The total request for but for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund are four million two hundred ninety-two thousand fifty-five dollars. Total request to authorize expenditure appropriation in funds other than general fund are fourteen million three hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval to set a public hearing for December eighth, twenty twenty at nine fifteen a.m. to consider approval of budget supplemental appropriations and amendments to the twenty twenty budget. Total request for adjustments to authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund are four million two hundred ninety-two thousand fifty-five dollars. Total request to authorize expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund are fourteen million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item eight point one four. This is the approval for a payment of five thousand to the city of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the state of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor two zero eight SR sixteen to SR three Gorst Interchange Transportation Project and ask staff to brief.
Thank you, Commissioners. Previously, the board had been briefed on the request for assistance in the marketing and lobbying costs for the Gorst project. This is putting it on the, um, on the, um, agenda for approval.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? We have questions from the public for staff. Okay, being no hands raised. Do we have a motion or?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item eight point one four for a payment of five thousand dollars to the city of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the state of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor two oh eight SR sixteen to SR three Gorst Interchange Transportation Project, and then I will have a comment.
All second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to thank Commissioner Netherland for his efforts on this issue. I know for many people that live in Mason County and in Kitsap County as well, this bottleneck in Gorst has been a nightmare for commuters, but it's also an opportunity for us to not only make improvements to the transportation infrastructure there, but also open up, you know, a modern interchange for economic development. And so just a word of thanks to Commissioner Netherland for his efforts on this. Look forward to the five thousand dollar contribution paying dividends for Mason County into the future, and I look forward to future updates from Commissioner Netherland on it.
With that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment also, special thanks to all of the commission then because it is all, it is very appreciative that we have a commission in Mason County that understands we're not locked just in this county, that what happens around us has a huge impact on us. And not all counties can say that, so thank you to Commissioner Schutie and Commissioner Trask as well because this will affect everybody. Thanks for your forward thinking on this.
All right, I look forward to, to the adventures happening up north, I guess you could say. I think that we have a lot of opportunity up north and we're taking advantage of that. And I too want to thank Commissioner Netherland for bringing this forward. All right, all those in favor of item eight, of the the approval for a payment of five thousand dollars to the city of Bremerton for Mason County's contribution to the Gorst Coalition in assisting them in marketing and lobbying costs to the state of Washington Department of Transportation Corridor two zero eight SR sixteen to SR three Gorst Interchange Transportation Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. Moving on to item eight point one five. Ask staff to come forward and present.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, uh, this was a, an attempt by the board to assist the Boys and Girls Club of South Sound, the North Mason Team and the South Sound YMCA in costs related to COVID- nineteen in their daycare services. The South Sound YMCA was determined to be ineligible for some of these costs. So they have declined to enter into the contract as was proposed. In addition, because the EDC is, um, is also not in a position to enter into these contracts, the contract has been, um, can be modified if the board so determines to one, have the county be the sub- recipient, the agent that enters into the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound as well as taking the twenty thousand that was available to the YMCA and assigning it to the Boys and Girls Club if the board so determines.
Great. Do we have questions for staff? Seeing none.
So I would, I would recommend then if to modify the item eight point one four five to read approval to sign the sub-recipient contract to assist with CARES Act funding to the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound North Mason Team for COVID- nineteen-related costs and mitigation efforts for forty thousand dollars.
Madam Chair, I'll move for the approval to sign the sub-recipient contract for CARES Act funding to the Boys and Girls Club, the South Puget Sound North Mason Team for COVID- nineteen-related costs and mitigation efforts, uh, up to forty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Do we have further discussion? Comments?
Madam Chair, uh, first off, thank you to both, uh, yourself and Commissioner Nolan for supporting this. One of the, one of the major issues that we've come across during the several months of our COVID response is how many elements of our community are impacted, whether they be through, uh, you know, school closures or remote learning or families having their hours reduced or job, uh, job loss and, and just those economic impacts on top of all the very real and serious health concerns that the pandemic has presented. And so I appreciate being able to support with our CARES Act funding this organization in North Mason. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get money in this round to the Y, um, and that's just sort of a structural issue, um, that, that, you know, kind of occurs when you're trying to, you know, allocate these funds and work with, with different community partners. And so, um, hopefully, hopefully, um, hopefully we'll have another opportunity to support organizations like the South Sound Y if there are future rounds of, of funding provided by both the state and federal government, and I really hope that there are at this point as we continue to see the virus persist. But I'm excited to be able to get this help to North Mason, um, to support those kids and families up there who are struggling through this and appreciate your support on this contract as well.
Great, thank you.
Commissioners, you know, it's always the things that really make the biggest difference are the individual, uh, personal attention that we as Commissioners give. Commissioner Schutie, I'm completely aware and appreciative of all your personal interactions to get us to this point with this organization. Thank you on behalf of all of them and as well as my community up there. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, truly appreciate you bringing this forward. I know you worked hard and you have a very strong passion for this and truly appreciate this. I know the families up, up north are are very grateful for, um, the, the Boys and Girls Club and for the help that they, they give everyone. So again, thank you, Commissioner Schutie, for bringing this forward and, and, um, helping push it along.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just, a word of thanks to our staff, uh, here at the county, Frank and, um, and Jennifer and others who, who worked on this, uh, for the past several months. As well as thanks to Katie Musgrove up at the Boys and Girls Club, uh, in North Mason. It's, um, appreciate having those partnerships in the community.
Great, great. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion is approved. Let's move on to item number eight point one six, the approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Ask staff to come forward and, uh, brief.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I just jump in on this one?
Absolutely.
Okay, the only thing, uh, reason why I asked it to be pulled, uh, there's nothing wrong with our appointments on this in any way, sense or form. I just wanted to give us an opportunity to have another discussion real quick. Uh, there's another application that had come in. I think we know the person, uh, and I didn't think we would need the interview, but it'd be up to the commission. This would give them their full board if we were to appoint, uh, the, uh, the third application that came in, which was George Blush. And so I would like to include the third application and finish this off if the other commissions would be, don't have any objection to that.
I would be amenable to that change.
I think it's a great addition and it will be great to have a full board.
Yes. Well, with that, Madam Chair, I move for approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr., uh, as well as George Blush as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval to appoint April Pruitt Poehler and Alan Emmons Jr. and George Blush as commissioners of the Mason County Housing Authority Board to fill the open positions for terms ending November seventeen, seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Did we have someone in the Zoom room that wanted to say anything? No. All right, do we have further discussion?
Just a huge thank you to, uh, April, Alan and George for stepping up. This is going to be a complicated situation that they're going to be walking into. They have our full support, uh, as they, as they get into this work, uh, but also a huge thank you to both Kathy and Gary for sticking it out on the Housing Authority Board for as long as they have. Um, we wouldn't be having these conversations if it wasn't for Kathy Hage's, uh, stick-to-itiveness and perseverance in, in keeping these issues in the forefront. So excited to see what happens with a full board.
Yes, as am I. I think it's, it's, it's a it's a, it's a huge step forward. And I look forward to, um, having all of them on the board and having a fully functioning board. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. All right, moving on to item number nine, um, other business. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to, uh, say anything?
Commissioners, if I may, just for a quickie?
Absolutely.
To give thanks, um, with Pete Buckus's resignation from Tip Cap, it, um, reminds me and our team of how thankful we are for our citizen volunteers. And Tip Cap and our SWAC, and I know certainly there are other advisory bodies, um, and folks dedicating many, many hours of time to community service and public service and just wanted to say how appreciative we are. We, um, get a lot more done through our great volunteers and thank you, thank you.
Well said, and, and I know I agree wholeheartedly.
Yeah, Pete is a real, a real class act, and he brings a career of, uh, just really great expertise in, in transportation and, and local government. And so he will be truly missed, but, uh, he has more than earned the opportunity to step down when he's ready and, and, uh, I wish him all the best in his next, his next endeavor.
Absolutely. We as well, and
Absolutely quality person. Couldn't have done any better. A hard, hard person to replace.
Agreed. I think I'll still pick up the phone every now and then and bug him though.
Well, good, unless he disconnects his number. Call away.
Right.
All right. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission?
Just maybe we could have Dave just, uh, I'm not sure. I know we have Board of Health later on this afternoon, but for folks who might be tuning into this, but not that, maybe Dave could give us an update on on where things stand and it was an active weekend, um, from the governor's office and just give us an idea of where things stand looking ahead, Dave.
Okay, hey, thanks. Um, so yes, it was an active weekend, uh, from the governor's office. So, uh, on Friday, a travel advisory came out to ask people if they travel out of state and come back to Washington or as they travel, coming to Washington, voluntarily quarantined for fourteen days. That was the first piece, and it was after the governor's, uh, talk on Thursday night. And then on Sunday, the governor came out with sixteen new, um, I'm not going to say restrictions because they're kind of, of reverse in phase. Uh, but they are restrictions. So, uh, and those we have posted online, they've probably seen them a lot of places. Probably the biggest things that affect Mason County are the, uh, reductions to indoor dining. So after, I think it's midnight tonight, uh, indoor dining goes to zero. Outdoor dining, uh, is limited to five people. Uh, and we've already had a couple of our local, uh, food establishments saying, hey, we are putting up tents and we're going outside. So more power to them. We have a number of retailers that, um, well, all of our retailers, retailers will be restricted. We have a number of retailers that, well, all of our retailers, retailers will be restricted to twenty-five percent of occupancy. So some of them are already starting with some curbside and some other innovative ways of maintaining services to their customers. And so that's out there as well. If people want more information, they can go either to our website, the county website, or they can go to, you know, Facebook, if you look at our county website or Facebook page or the Macecom or any of those Mason government Facebook pages, that's all up there. It's, it's slated to go as far as December fourteenth. That's all we've heard for sure so far. We are waiting for the actual, so we've gotten the, the two-page document. We're actually waiting for the governor's office to come out with the specifics for all of those things, and I expect that anytime, probably this week to, to get those specifics out. As soon as we get those out, hopefully putting that out through the Joint Information Center, through Area Command, to get that through as many channels as possible. So that's kind of the highlights. It's really around the food and, and oh, the other thing is indoor gatherings. No indoor gatherings, outdoor gatherings of five people. So for Thanksgiving time, governors asking people to not have people outside of your, your family household with your fam- in your Thanksgiving or actually any indoor gathering between now and December fourteenth. So that's probably the other big thing. So, and I, any questions?
How about from a cases perspective, Dave, what are, what are the trends that you're seeing locally and how does that fit in regionally?
Okay, so last week we had a lot of, of our cases were in the twenty and younger category. So that might have been some from maybe Halloween. This week, over the weekend, we had an average of four cases per day, which is kind of a plateau for us. We kind of bounce up and down around that four cases per day. We did have one day last week when we shot up to, you know, I think it was twenty cases. Where we're seeing our cases is not from coming from retail establishments, but it's really from household contacts. And typically, it's, it's one member of the household through travel or whatever is comes in contact with COVID, brings it home, and then the family gets it. So it's kind of waterfalls or cascades through the family, and that's what we're seeing right now. And as I think as we see this fall and people are now coming indoors more, I mean, the rain is here, folks, and, and folks are together inside. We'll see more of that, I think.
Thank you.
And I think best place to get information, I mean, you can always give the health department a call, but go online, all the guidances online and encourage everyone to follow it. It's, it's kind of, yesterday we met with, Dave and I met with the, the chambers and with the EDC to see if we could come up with new and innovative solutions or opportunities, I guess, for our businesses to to hopefully keep their doors, doors open and not go under. I know I've, I've heard from a lot of businesses that they're they're on the teeter totter and the totter that, is it the teeter or the totter? Anyway, one side's going down and, and it's, it's going to be tough on them. They're not sure that they can make it an additional thirty days. So if we can support them by going in twenty-five percent can go into a, a store, I mean, that's what their capacity is. So I encourage everyone to, to please shop local.
Right. And one of the things, there's two things I'm thinking of. One is, this is just an interesting note, is that it seems like that the symptoms that COVID is presenting with are different than they were last summer or even last spring. It seems like typically the, the most noticeable thing now is lost taste and smell as the precursor to going and getting tested. Where in the spring it was the cough and, and fever. So it's presenting in a different way. The other thing I talked with staff and I want to bring it up today at the Board of Health is to think about postponing, typically what we do is we send out our billings for restaurant licensing in December with that revenue coming in in January. And I went to talk to the Board of Health this afternoon about thinking about what if we do notices in January, once we come off of this hiatus for maybe a February revenue hole? So just to give our restaurants a little bit of a breathing room before they're looking, you know, to pay their, their annual food bill, you know, let things get restocked and restarted before we, we come in as, you know, with their, their permits. So something we can talk about this afternoon at Board of Health.
Right, right. Also, I also wanted to mention that you can also get ahold of the, the chambers or the EDC, they can absolutely help you through through this, the, the new restrictions here too. They're, they're all very hopeful, very knowledgeable.
And we, the governor said he is putting out fifty million dollars in additional funding, but we've not seen what that looks like yet. And I think that's going to be allocated very quickly. I'm not sure if that's on the November thirtieth deadline or if that's on the December thirty deadline.
And we've also started conversations about increasing our support to the EDC, you know, for businesses as well. I'm trying to repurpose and reallocate some of the CARES Act funding out the door as quickly as we can to get it out to those, those folks that are impacted.
Right, right.
I agree with, with this new effect, the thing that's taken effect now. That's a very important conversation sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Where we're at right now in this time with financial to be able to do some of this stuff.
Right, the sooner the better. All right. Any other comments?
Just take it seriously. Stay safe.
All right, let's move on to item number ten. We do not have any public hearings scheduled at this time. So let's move on to item number eleven, Board Reports and Calendar. Commissioner Netherland, if you could go first, Commissioner Shute, and then I will follow.
Be honored. Commissioners, we have our Area Command meetings that we attend a couple of times a week. We have briefing budget, Belfair EIS meeting with staff, spaghetti feed for a gentleman who is in an accident in North Mason. Tim and Frank in regards to the Housing Authority meeting with some attorneys, Wire 15 meeting, Mason Transit Authority Policy Meeting, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, Thirty-Fifth District's Legislative Meeting. Thank you, Dan Griffey, for attending that and listening to all of our issues that we had. Coming up, we have a Finance Committee meeting, Board of Health meeting, Mason Transit Authority meeting, SAO exit meeting, EDC retreat, North Basin Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, Belfair Community Workshop and Gorst Coalition meeting as well as briefings again on that Monday with North Basin Community Voice hanging on whether they're going to have a meeting or not.
Going forward for me this week, we have our Finance Committee, SAO Exit Conference, Budget Workshop and Executive Session later this morning. This afternoon, I'll be participating with the State Association of Counties and a Behavioral Health focus group with, with folks from across the state on citing of community-based behavioral health facilities. Really looking forward to that. Board of Health and Mason Transit. Then later on this week, have the Opioid Stakeholder Group and Hood Canal Coordinating Council, as well as a meeting of the Behavioral Health and Housing Advisory Board. Also be attending the Belfair EIS workshop on Thursday evening. And then next week, in addition to briefings, before our next meeting, I also have a meeting of the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization.
Great, thank you. So as stated by the my teammates, we do have the Finance Committee meeting, the Secretary of State's Audit Meeting, Budget Workshop, an Executive Session, have a call with our folks at Area Agency on Aging. We have Board of Health meeting, Mason Transit meeting. Also during that time, I have a, an LSC meeting. This week is our WASC virtual conference. So most of this week I will be sitting here. And let's see, then we have our EOC meetings. Several different bits of the WASC conference, Timber County's meeting. And then we have the Belfair EIS meeting, have Pac Mountain on Friday. And our, of course, our EOC meetings, and we have briefing on Monday. And then we also have the canvassing board, or I have the canvassing board on Monday as well. All right. Do we have anything else, Commissioners?
I do not.
All right, I see no hands up. How about a motion?
Madam Chair, move we adjourn.
Second.
Now we are adjourned. You guys in the next room.